Okay, welcome everyone. It's Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. It's nine o'clock and we're here for our weekly board session in the Senator hearing room. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have some public comment. We have David Beam and Danielle Gonzalez.
Mr. Chair, I believe Ms. Gonzalez has withdrawn her public comment.
Oh, okay. Thanks for being here. Hey, David.
Holly, thank you having me, Commissioner. I want to give the county $30 million for the city, Marion County Sheriff, more funding because a lot of homeless people taking advantage of the city downtown and it's a mess. So I'm asking you giving me 30 more million dollars for services for police departments in the city because of the need to clean this mess up. It's getting out of hand. So I'd like the county step in and go to the legislature and get more funding for this and clean it up because it's getting out of hand and some people are getting hurt. So I'd like to see this done.
Okay, well, we'll ask the legislature for $30 million then. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our consent agenda. And I guess you're up. You've been, yeah, you've been doing it a few times here.
I know, I was trying to figure out what day it is, but I don't know it's March 4th. Someone didn't mention that.
I did mention it.
Well, did you?
I did, yeah.
All right.
You can look at the video, there's evidence.
I'll be looking. So Chair Willis, I would like to move our consent calendar only two items this morning. First, under Business Services, approve an order appointing John Latimer to the Marion County Retirement Plans Committee and approve a recommendation to just upward the pay grade for Classification 600 Information Technology Director and 607 County Counsel.
This looks like they're trying to slide something through here.
Yeah, how's that relate?
John's a little, I mean, that's, it's pretty controversial. He's a controversial character. Do you trust him?
I do.
Do you think he'll do a good job?
I just talked to him yesterday. He seems happy. Makes me look forward to the future.
Okay, now I'll second your motion. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, first up, we have Kevin and Larry under Business Services. We're going to discuss accepting the final closeout report for the Marion County Public Safety Building, visitor reception remodel at the Marion County Jail, and the Marion County Transition Center heating, ventilation, and air conditioning retrofit.
They're not going to have anything to do after this.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
For the record, Kevin Burton, Construction Project Coordinator for Marion County.
And I'm Larry Tilford, Facilities Program Manager for Marion County. We wanted to present a closeout report on three major projects this, this morning, but also to let you know that over the last year or so, Facilities Management has completed nine of 14 capital improvement projects, about four and a half million dollars worth of work. And we're pretty proud of that. And we'll have more done by June 30th and complete more of those numbers. All of those projects have been done on time and under budget, so that's an accomplishment we're proud of. And Kevin has been a terrific driver for that, a great project leader and has managed them well. So he's here to share with you a closeout on the bigger capital construction projects this morning.
Good morning, Kevin.
Okay, so I prepared fairly short slideshow for the amount of slides that I actually have collected on a lot of these projects. We're going to start with the Public Safety Building. Maybe. So a little history on the building. Our enforcement and parole and probation offices were located in various locations. The design of this project was to bring them all under one roof, let all the departments interact together and actually build them a facility where it's built around their purpose. So design started before I got here. They had elected to go with a special procurement type process with a construction management, general contractor, also known as a CMGC contract, where the contractor partners with the county and the design team to help initiate the building and work through the process, make sure it's buildable and can fit within our budget. So our budget was established at about 13,800,000. The building ended up costing about 11,290,000, so approximately 250,000 below budget, or 200, 2,500,000 below budget. We had nine change orders total on the project for 134, out of 134 change order requests. And that total was about 627,426 dollars, or about 5.5% of total project cost. So this was the rendering that we had for the building. Here's our construction trailer and dirt work starting. The start of the earthwork. So they spent quite a bit of time turning the earth over, adding water to it to make sure we got the density. Here you can see the concrete pad that is being added, or the gravel pad. This is a cement treatment that they did around the perimeter of where the building was going to be to keep mud mitigation down. They just grind the concrete into the soil. It makes a road base that they can use, but it also keeps the mud down, saves a lot of gravel time. So they did that early on in the process. So here's the gravel pad where the building's eventually going to sit, and they're putting in all the underground utilities, and they're laying out for the footings. There's our first slab pour. They did three slab pours on this building. It's about 31,000 square feet. So as they built, as the first slab was ready to start building on, they started framing on the first slab while they were still prepping the further slabs, the future slabs. And there's the final slab pour, pour number three. In the framing process, we elected to go with wood framing, saved some on the front end. A lot of the initial costs of a metal prices were very high at that time, so we elected to go with wood structural framing. Trouses going up. This is a secure room inside the perimeter. Our temporary roof that helped keep things dry inside so that we could keep going with HVAC systems and stuff like that before we got our permanent roof on. And then the crane lifting our tresses up onto the building. Progression of the tresses. Weather protection on the windows, temporary weather protection so that we could dry it out inside. This is the starting of the framing process for the offices and hallways. Our final roof with our roof access, the roofing process. You can see there's the temporary roof, three layers of roof insulation, adding six inches to help thermal efficiency within the building. And the outside vapor barrier and the roofing staging. Insulation and drywall going in. The weather wrap, weather seal. You can see how well the windows are all wrapped up so we don't get water infiltration. The brick on the entry is starting. Drywall taping happening outside or inside at the same time. You can see the progression of the exterior. There's all our windows waiting for installation. Our boiler room for hydronic heating. Our electrical mains going in. T-bar ceilings, all the HVAC and lighting going in, getting connected. Casework shows up. Restrooms are getting tiled. Exterior's getting close for pavement. The explosion of IT spaghetti. Back paving lot got, or back parking lot got paved. Flooring going in. Our inspection team here. Landscaping. End of the lobby. Locker room. Front parking lot, we're close to there. Got our systems furniture installed, office furniture. Office furniture was all provided by Oregon Correction Enterprises. Landscaping being planted. Our bioswale, this is to help all the storm runoff get filtered before it ever goes back into the storm system. Our sign. Dedication plaque. And now we're open for business. Any questions or comments on that?
Any questions, Commissioner, or comments?
No, I don't know what I'd do about it, but now that it's an operation for a period of time, I know it's hard to say just off the top of your head, but are people happy? Did it work? Is it functional is my real question.
I've heard lots of positive comments. I haven't heard many of anything on the negative side.
I should, I haven't either. I just, I want to know it's all good.
I do see, the times that I'm over there, I see the camaraderie between the different departments. So parole and probation and the enforcement side will meet halfway in the hall and have that conversation whereas I think they were separated a lot more before. So I'm sure the Sheriff's Department can speak a lot better to that than I can. But from what I've seen, I think it was a very positive, positive move on the county's part to put this all under one roof.
And the Sheriff's Department's up later, so they can tell us all the problems with it. No, I just, I just want to say, Kevin, Colleen, Larry, you guys in the Sheriff's Office, this is, I've gotten nothing but compliments and I'm new, so I didn't really have anything to do about this. But, you know, when you're running around town, there are plenty of people willing to give you their opinion about how you're spending their tax dollars. And I would say it's not common that you get people saying, wow, you really did a good job. You know, you really, really did that. And especially people who will, are happy to criticize the county and, you know, point out ways that we can improve. I've been sort of impressed at how many people have been like, wow, you guys really did that one right. And under budget and efficient and if only we could get other jurisdictions to build their buildings the way you guys did that one. So I just want you to know that this is sort of like, I'm like, wow, I didn't know so many people, you know, paid attention to how we build our buildings, but this is definitely a gold star in the county facilities department.
Now, I didn't have a picture of the groundbreaking, I noticed. And then you could have seen that look on my face like, gee, I hope this works. But it did.
Well, it's a test.
I was trying to keep a very, our slideshow very short. I think I have 3,500 photos of that particular building in there. So the next project I wanted to talk about for our closeout was the HVAC, Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning upgrade that we did at our Transition Center formerly known as our Work Release Center. The, the system had failed. It hadn't been keeping temperatures very well. We were spending a fortune pouring water down a ground loop system just to try to keep the system operating in its, in some fashion. There was also a lot of air quality issues within the building because we weren't getting air exchanges. If you remember, last year I did a presentation on the roof upgrade on this building. They were hand in hand, the two projects, because we were getting a lot of interior condensation inside the building, and we really liked to keep the rain on the outside, not on the inside. So in looking at the building holistically, we knew we needed to replace the roof, but in the HVAC system, we also wanted to do air exchanges in it so we can get that humidity out and also a lot of the odors that accompany a holding facility. So we did a four-pipe system, a four ductwork system, so we're doing a lot of air exchanges. We, we had to put four ductworks to every office. It is a VRF system, so it's a variable refrigerant flow system. So we've got a lot of fan coil units throughout, so if one fails, we still, it only shuts off about four offices worth of area. The rest of them will still work to keep heating going throughout the building. So that's a little history on that. While we were doing the project, we also realized that we were moving most all of the lights and the drop ceiling, so it'd be a really good time to upgrade the lighting in the building, which was old T-12 bulbs. And so we asked for a little additional budget so that we could, once the lights were out, we might as well put new lights back in. There were some code deficient lights within the restroom facilities that we had to change anyway, so it just made sense to add lighting to the project as well. So you'll see slides on that as well. Then we also upgraded the water heating. We had had a boiler in there for heating water previously, and that boiler had failed. So they had put in a temporary electric water heater and a holding tank to try to keep hot water there for, to service the population. And so we replaced that electric with an actual gas-fired boiler for efficiency and kept the electric as a, as a backup. So if the boiler ever fails, we still have that electrical backup. So the project was, original budget was about 1,385,000. Our final actual budget was about 1,235,000. We had about 176,000 in change orders, about 1.5% total project price. So this was part of the reason it was timed. This was some of our water trapping measures, the five-gallon bucket. You can see the staining on the wall of the water running down from the condensation. A pump that was probably beyond its useful life. This was some of the ductwork that was there. This is why we kind of want to filter the air a little better because this is all stuff that was collected within the ductwork. You really don't want to know what that stuff is. Also because of the condensation and moisture within the building, we had a lot of mold issues. So this was all addressed with a abatement company. They came in and they removed all the mold. And you can see they removed the drywall. They treated all the woodwork, removed the insulation that was molding. So we did that and multiple, any area that we found any of the mold and replaced that all as part of the project. So this is the start of the project. They're doing the equipment pads. We have a big air handler out in the back of the building. And a couple of compressor units. This is towards the front of the building. This is the second location with condensing units. As you can see, we had an existing transformer there and a radio antenna and an emergency generator. And we poured a little larger concrete pad and enclosed that all within a security fence. There's the demo and start of the project. They're ripping and tearing everything out. Those are the old fan coil units. Those have refrigerant going to them and they blow heat into different areas. There's 26 in this building, I believe. There might be 28. The way the design was is we have two main trunk lines coming in from that big air handler that was out back. These pipes were in the way of that air handler. It's one of the change orders we had to look at. This is temporary heating that we're using right now to make sure that we are keeping heat to all the occupants of the building. This is where our trunk lines will be going into the, in through the roof. Those are about 36 inches square, just for scale. Here's the ductwork getting hooked up. And here's where it came through where those original pipes were that I was just talking about. And you can see how full that attic space is. It's, it's a very tight area to try to run that much ductwork. Here's a new fan coil unit going in. More fan coil units. This is where they're drilling holes for refrigerant piping. And our refrigerant piping that's going through the wall at those holes. Condensate lines. See how all the ductwork is all sealed up with mastic and insulation? That's so we don't have any air leaks and everything stays sealed. That way we don't get condensation back into the building. You can see the nest of ductwork and wiring that the contractors had to work around in some of these photos. Like I say, it was quite a congested space and they did an excellent job at making everything fit and work. Trying to get four of those ductworks to each offices in that building was quite a challenge. So new access panels so we can access everything. That's a dedicated HVAC unit for our control tower. There's the old electric water heater. Our new gas-fired water heater. The boiler installed. And our backup electric is still there in line. So this is what our existing old lighting looked like. These were, those weren't high-pressure sodiums, those were HDMIs. And so you can see the ballast on top of the light. They're, they use a lot of energy. These are our new LED fixtures, very little energy use. An old Toffler fixture and the new fixture. An old exterior soffit light and our new lights. All the new lighting is LED. These are the old T-12s that were in all the open space in all the dorms, classrooms, multipurpose areas, all that kind of stuff. And these are the new light fixtures. So it adds a lot cleaner look. They're a lot smaller. The fixtures we couldn't replace, we actually retrofitted with new bulbs. And then we got new exit lights as well. And that exits that project. Any questions, comments?
Not questions, but we've just had big problems and known about it for a long time. Finally, could we get to address it? But one thing in that project, Kevin, you had to work around an operating facility too, and that had to make it difficult, didn't it, or just deal with it?
The contractor was very, very good with working with the department. The department was very good at helping us gain that access and work through all of that. Part of the background checks was a bit of a challenge because we always have to have the escorting in secure areas. Wasn't so big actually in the population end as it was in the enforcement end because enforcement, our Public Safety Building still wasn't done at the time. So we had the enforcement end on the back half of the building, and there was a lot of criminal justice information that is secure. So you got to make sure everybody has proper background checks or escorting. Luckily, a lot of the people within the contractors department actually got their CGS clearance, so they were able to help escort their own staff through that process. But the department worked with us. They helped us get escorts as needed and, of course, I was there a lot doing what I needed to do.
Agreed.
So our next project is the jail visitation lobby. And this was a, a brought to us from the department that, that there was, in the original design, they didn't provide a secure entry for the lobby. So as people come to visit anybody that's in population at our jail, they would have free access to the big lobby area, the restrooms, all of that. They didn't have to go through a metal detector. There wasn't any safety protocol for them to come into the lobby. So worst-case scenario, an active shooter could just end up walking through the door and being able to, you know, not have anybody but an armed guard at the control station to be able to respond to that. So this is the old drawing and, if my mouse would show up here. This was the old area where the deputies were to allow people through a metal detector here to actually go into the visitation area of the jail. What we did is we moved this area over here into a fully enclosed, secure room so we could add the metal detector and X-ray machines here so that we could essentially bottleneck that traffic coming in and be able to make sure everybody was scanned before they came into that area. There were some existing lockers here that were utilized by attorneys and that kind of thing for people that brought something in that they couldn't take back into the jail. They could lock up temporarily in here. So there was a so we got the project going. This is, they blocked off an area. This was also all during, during operations. We didn't stop letting visitors come to the jail during this whole project. So we screened off an area. This is the demo of the lockers. There was walls framed around the lockers. This is where the lockers were removed. There was also conduits in the floor you can see coming out that provided lighting there. There was also a drinking fountain on the backside of that. The drinking fountain got relocated to this location between some vending machines in the lobby. This is the new room that's starting to take shape. You can see the vending machines in the, in the background off to the right and the hole in the wall where the drinking fountain is going to go. We created this little half-wall here to funnel people towards the windows of the reception room. The old reception booth had some bulletproof glass that was rimmed around the top of it, and we actually reutilized that glass in this project in several locations. So we designed that little half-wall to utilize a piece of that glass and then another half-wall that you'll see in the future. So this, that ute out of that wall right there is where glass will get inset. Our drinking fountain getting installed. Our HVAC coming across the roof there and blowing overhead into that space. It is insulated and stuff, our wiring. So they've got their telephone electrical data. This is the other half-wall. This is back by the elevator where you enter the jail to go to the visitation area. So this also created another controlled point to keep anybody from being able to just walk into the jail facility. So this is the interior of the room as we're getting casework and countertops installed. The back wall, you can see the glass is now installed there. So this is kind of the final, one of the final pictures. And this is the demo of the old workstation. So we had the new station all completely up and running, and then we're able to demo the old. So there's the new half-wall protecting people or stopping access up to the jail without permission. And then our metal detector and X-ray machine all set up. So this project had a original budget of about 80,000. When bids came in and we actually looked at the total design package, we asked for an increase in the budget. So we got a budget increase to 125,000 so we could perform the budget as, or perform the project as it was designed, as it was shown here. We did a lot of cost-saving measures to even keep that price to where it was. If you notice, the, we, they wanted bulletproof glass in those openings going into the room, but we left those all open, made them small enough so people couldn't jump through, but attorneys and stuff could still pass through cell phones and that kind of stuff. So that saved quite a bit of cost there. We can still add them in the future, those kind of things. We didn't patch some of the tile that had small holes in it and some other things like that in coordination with the project. They probably would have liked a roof on top of their little building with their own individual HVAC controls. That would have added another 15, 20,000 dollars to the project. The way we did it, we're still controlling the environment there. It's a little bit of an echo chamber, but we were able to keep it all within budget. So our final cost was 122,865. Yeah, it was like half a percent. Half a percent for change order costs. And then if there's no questions on that project, I'd just quickly like to hit on our lessons learned that we had for these projects.
Please.
Hearing no questions? So a lot of our lessons learned carry over from all of the different projects. And in, in design review, it's really, really important that we have everybody involved, the department, the end user, the facilities management group, and the contractors. The more review you can get on the documents, the less change The more review you can get on the documents, the less change orders you have, the less questions you'll end up with. It just helps the whole process go a lot smoother. So I've really been trying to focus very hard on design review and making sure that even within the design discipline, the architects and engineers have reviewed everything amongst their own disciplines before it ever comes back to us for review so that we can help mitigate any of these changes that come up. Another lesson is that I always like to weigh a short-term cost versus a long-term maintenance or ongoing facilities issue. If we spend a little bit more upfront, sometimes it saves a lot of costs for the county down the road. So these are all things that we can look at within that design review process, but also as a group, all users, as to whether it actually can fit the budget or not, if it's something we want to delegate down the road, those kind of things. But it's always something worth having a conversation about. Then we always want to review the previous projects that we've had for any change orders so we don't end up with like items. I was not real good at that at some of these projects, and I know that there were several of them where we had reoccurring missing data items, and they ended up hitting me with change orders multiple times for missing data items. That is something that I am focusing very hard to make sure that we have all low voltage included in every project that we're doing so we avoid those costs. We want to make sure that our facility staff is always involved in the project from the design inception to its completion. These are the guys that are going to be working on this forever. So their input is very, very vital as to our ongoing maintenance costs and upkeep for the buildings in that they help standardize or not make it something that's easy for us to be able to respond to and repair and keep functioning. Sometimes architects and engineers like to do their little pet projects, and it's not really feasible for everybody. So they help keep the reins on some of that. The other thing we always want to kind of look at is plan new maintenance and landscaping into our extended budgets. So we have a new building, public safety building. We've got different type of HVAC system at the transition center. We've got a new location for the lobby. What are the maintenance needs of that down the road? Did we plan landscaping, ongoing landscaping needs into that ongoing budget so that we can make sure we address those, not just looking at it from this is our initial building, this is what we need to get it done, but what's it going to take budgetarily to keep it long-term? Another thing that I had some problems with was setting completion dates on changes. So you can get a change order, but if you're not really specific in making sure you follow through with a dedicated completion date, that could drag on for a very long period of time. It could also hold up other periods of the project that are important. Always want to be present in the process and have open ears, listen to the subs that are around you, listen to the people that are talking. Sometimes you gain a lot of information that way. Helps everybody be on the same page, keeps the coordination and cohesion going. Safety fasteners, when we are working in a correctional facility, we need to make sure that in our design review, we are specifying that we have safety tamper-resistant fasteners because we have some very ingenious incarcerated people that have found ways to take a lot of these out. So that's something that I need to concentrate more on. Our local design teams help us reduce reimbursable costs, and they add response and direct involvement. So I like when we're working with local firms versus somebody from even out of state we've had before because their response times are a lot better. And then they can charge you four hours for driving here and then four hours for driving back at engineer's wages. It's not the best, best for keeping budgets in line. And then I always like to look for value of scale. So at the transition center, we removed 80, 85% of the T-bar ceiling. We looked for value of scale. We added the lighting to the project that made good sense. What we didn't do was add the other 15% to 20% of the T-bar ceiling. So we essentially have brand-new T-bar ceiling throughout the whole building, but there was 10%, 15% that I really hadn't decided to move forward with, and they were in back rooms and stuff. But that could have been an economy of scale item that we should have maybe looked at for a small change and been able to put a clean whistle on that whole ceiling there. Those were the highlights of my lessons learned.
Kevin, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You talked about having completion date on change orders in order to make sure that projects are moving on time. How do you manage the time on these projects? Because some of these are relatively complicated. Like if you're building a whole new building, you have to get input from your client, the sheriff's office in this instance. You also have to work with the various contractors and subcontractors and some of the stuff somebody might want, but they don't really understand what that would mean as far as the scope of the project or the budget. How do you manage that to make sure that you keep, keep the trains running and get these projects done timely?
Excuse me. It's not coronavirus. When we, when we approach a change order request, it is just that, it's a request. So whether it's coming from the department or from the owner or from the contractor is that it's a request for a change. And with each one of those requests, we ask for a breakdown of cost, impact on schedule, and like items. So we can, we can approach it from, looking at it from the monetary standpoint, from the budget impact standpoint, and from a scheduling standpoint. So we've got all three of those pieces basically with each change order request that come in.
And do you have like a timeline that you put on that? So sort of like, I need these, I need this back within a week, and then I need comments on it within another week? Or how do you make sure that process doesn't just drag?
So if it's, if it's definitely a needed change, then I can push through and talk to all the people I need to, to be able to approve that change order request and get that moving as fast as possible. As far as timeline, we can also state that this is the time we need to have this done or it can't impact anything else. And then they will generally add dollars to the change order request so that they can make sure they meet that timeline. If it's not a huge item for the timeline, then we can reduce that and keep it as a more open-end timeframe.
Got it.
Then we'll also put some of the onus back on the contractor in that even though we've asked for this change or you've asked for this change, you can't let it affect these other pieces. You know, you can, you can section off part of the building that the change is involved in, keep everything progressing on the other side, and then be able to jump back into the original area of the change. So some of it's logistics within the, within the project's scope itself.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Well, not questions, comments. I just want to thank everybody, Kevin, Larry, I see Colleen back there that was involved in these things and pretty great success in setting, setting the county up to be successful in the future, the best way I think of it. But the other that I wanted to acknowledge was, well, Jan Fritz primarily, but perhaps John Latimer too for identifying the problem and kind of leading the charge to make these corrections. So I think we can all be pretty pleased. And with that, if I left anybody out, I'm sorry. I'll just say anybody connected has done well. I'd like to make a motion that we do accept the final close-out report for the Marion County Public Safety Building, the visitor-reception remodel at Marion County Jail, and the Marion County Transition Center heating. That's my motion.
All right. Ventilation, air conditioning.
Yeah, I don't care so much about that.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Camber and Leanne, are you here?
Yes.
We're going to consider approval of the tax foreclosed and surplus real properties sold at public auction held on February 25th, 2020.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager for Marion County.
Good morning. I'm Leanne Arant, property coordinator for finances as well.
Good morning.
This morning, we are here to request, oh, did I push that too far back? Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. This morning, we're here to request approval of the auction that was recently held. We had some sales there, so we're requesting final approval of those sales. On January 15th, we requested the board sign and approve a board order for an auction to be held, and we planned and held that auction on February 25th, 2020. We had seven properties listed for sale. Of the seven, five were sold on either a land sale contract or in cash sales. The first property we sold was Lot 2 of 460 Churchdale Avenue in Kaiser, Oregon. This property was sold, or sorry, the starting minimum bid for this property was $60,000. The highest bid made was $62,600. This property was sold as a cash sale and was paid in full. The second property was a vacant designated wetland off of Fern Ridge Road in Staton. The starting minimum bid for this property was $3,915. The final highest bid was $36,500. This property was sold on a 10-year land sale contract with the county. The next property is a vacant lot off of Santiam Highway and Riverside Drive in Idana. This starting bid on this property was $1,590. The highest and final bid was $6,000, sold on a two-year land sale contract with the The next property sold was a vacant lot off of Bonneville Avenue in Kaiser, Oregon. This was sold on a 10-year land sale contract with the county as well. The starting minimum bid was $25,000, the highest bid was $25,100. The last property sold was 1070 Barnes Avenue Southeast in Salem, a manufactured home on a lot. The starting minimum bid for this property was $97,598, and it sold for $145,000 on a 10-year land sale contract with the county. We're requesting that the sales be approved. The revenue of these sales were $275,200, and these funds will be dispersed between the taxing districts and the Marion County and across the Marion County if approved. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Any questions?
Well, ideally, and let me show who put it in. I can't make RMV. What's, what values?
Real market value.
Real market value. I couldn't think of that one. But anyway, all of them seem to sell a bit better than minimum, and it sounds like you've done well. And as such, I'd make a motion we approve the tax foreclosed and surplus real properties sold at public auction on February 25th, 2020.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Very much for your work.
Real market value. I forgot about that.
Real market value. There you go. Okay, Joe, and Joe, the Joes. Just one Joe. Oh, there is two. There you go. We're going to consider approval of resolution initiating amendments to Section 17.120.040 of the Marion County Code and schedule a public hearing for April 8th, 2020.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Miller from Legal Counsel's Office.
So this item for you today is a resolution to initiate amendments to the Marion County Zone Code related to the criteria for placement of temporary hardship dwellings on properties in Marion County. These provisions allow upon attaining a condition to permit temporary home to be placed on a property to care for a family member. This section of the code was last updated in 2008. Initiating this process and considering amendments developed by staff will address issues with the existing code that develops since, that have developed since that time. At a meeting on February 24th, the board discussed this issue and directed staff to prepare a resolution initiating the amendments and to schedule a public hearing. The resolution has been prepared for your consideration. You have the options of adopting the resolution as written. We're scheduling a public hearing for April 8th, 2020. Direct staff to modify the resolution and bring it back for consideration at a different time or take no action at this time. Staff recommends the board adopt the resolution as written and schedule a public hearing for April 8th. Do you have questions?
You have any questions, Commissioner?
Well, I know these would be taken up at a public hearing, but just because I'm thinking of it now, I'm pretty fine with the concept and everything, but I'd like to know something about the procedures to monitor the appropriateness of continued use and how you enforce a removal because in my experience, they never leave. So I'll be looking for those.
We'll be prepared for that at the time, yes.
We had a management update on this.
Correct.
We went over it recently, and I appreciate you guys fixing this because I know this is, this was sort of a hole in our code.
Yes.
And I'm glad we're closing that hole.
So Chair Wilson made a motion we approve a resolution that initiates amendments to Section 17.120.040 of Marion County Code and schedule a public hearing for April 8th, 2020.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Commissioners. Okay. Brian May. We are going to consider approval for the contract for services with Stericycle Incorporated in the amount of $2,600,000 to operate the household hazardous waste facility located at Salem-Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station and provide off-site collection events in Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties through February 28th, 2023. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brian May, Marion County Public Works Environmental Services Division. A little background on this agreement or consideration for this contract. Marion County owned and owned the facility located at Skirts, the Salem-Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station. Skirts is owned and operated by Republic Services, so our facility basically sits on their property. The facility was constructed in 2004, and we opened into the public, opened to the public in April 2005. As part of that process, we've gone out for proposals. Now, this is our fourth, so every five years. Just want a little more background as far as the volumes of material. Our residents and businesses do take advantage of getting rid of this, this highly corrosive material that we do not want out in the environment or going to our incinerator or being put in a landfill. In 2019, we collected just slightly over 274,000 pounds. This is up 27% just year over year. So we're seeing some significant increases as we continue to operate this facility. Prior to this original opening, as I mentioned, a request for proposals were submitted for operation of the facility, and as mentioned, also doing some off-site collection events in, some in Marion County, but primarily Polk and Yamhill Counties. So that's handled through an intergovernmental agreement with the other counties where we basically pass through those expenses. So the contractor will provide the service, it'll come build through us, and then the county, the other counties will reimburse us for those activities. They are also seeing similar increases through their collection events and are even considering additional collection events to try to capture more and more of this material as it comes through. As mentioned, these have to be solicited based on contract rules every five years. In the past, we've typically only had one or two proposals. This year, we had three, and so we're excited about that. The initial proposal was issued November 12th of 2019 and closed December 20th of 2019. All three proposals received and evaluated. Stericycle Incorporated was selected as the highest-scoring proposal. A notice of intent to award was announced January 22nd of 2020, and we received no protest under that. The contract itself is a very large number. It's $2,600,000, and that is meant for the full length of the potential contract of five years. The services will be provided under that contract will not only be the operation of the facility itself out at Skirts, which will be opened every Thursday and every other, or the first and third Saturdays of the month. That's our, kind of our standard rotation. And along with handling what we consider the conditional exempt small quantity generators, so more small businesses and farms that are also able to bring materials in, add a fee, and those are set up by appointment only because they're typically larger volumes of material that are brought in. And they also continue, Stericycle will continue to operate the satellite events in Polk and Yamhill Counties. This agreement, as I mentioned, was a maximum of five years. So at this point, Public Works staff recommends approval of contract number PW3289-20. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, sir?
I just got lots of comments today. I had to ask Brian about that number. I kind of fell over. Last contract for equivalent work would have been how much? Do you know off the top of your head?
I believe it's up almost a million dollars. I believe it's up almost a million dollars over that five-year period, so.
And we're talking like 200 tons, but they're 200 terrible tons that we, just like Brian said, you don't want going through the landfill or the, or the burner. But have we followed up on the final disposition of these products that they've, I know it'll be a different company, but does it end up in a, where?
Yeah, so very good question. I appreciate it. There's a whole manifest process to assure that this material is taken to a final proper resting place so that it's not just stuck out, you know, dumped in somebody's backyard or something along that line. So there's literally a papal trail of all materials collected through the facility to its final resting. Some of that is handled through incineration and some of it is in a hazardous wastelandfill, depending on the material types.
Trying to do some quick math. So say it's 200 tons a year, would that be a number?
200 pounds.
No, tons. 224,000.
It's a, it's a little over 1,000, so almost 1,500-ish tons a year.
A year.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a pretty good number, but per pound, it's awful expensive is where I was going and it always kills me that the people who produce, profit, market these materials, leave someone else to deal with it. And I've worked on that for 30 years, but there's still, we kind of got at it with paint. Maybe you should hear about it with drugs or something someday, but somehow those that profit from it should end, end up not just leaving it for us to pick up the.
Yeah. Last year in legislature, there was an attempt to kind of do something similar to the paint care program or the e-cycles program for household hazardous waste. I think that was kind of an initial start and I think you will continue to see that come back up because it is one of those very expensive streams.
The first place I thought it wasn't necessarily hazardous waste with plastics, those people. I mean, look at the problems we're having all over the world and they really sit pumping them out and not responsible at all for the disposition of them. It's not right.
A lot of discussion around the extended producer responsibility or EPR. I think we'll hear that more from DEQ as we, we deal with the, kind of the recycling crisis.
I'm getting off the subject. Go ahead.
I just have, I have two questions. The first, Brian, is could you kind of talk about what are some of these household hazardous wastes? Can you give me some examples of, of what constitutes a household hazardous waste?
Yeah, so the, the one that really comes to mind is, is those products that you'd use for maintaining your yard, so round up, any other kind of weed controls, the spray chemicals, pesticides, herbicides of those that are more of those household quantities. This will even get into potential bleaches or sometimes somebody will end up with that mixed can of fuel that they never used and it's been sitting on a shelf. It, it kind of runs the gamut for us as, as what we might receive.
Another question I have is, you said that these guys got the highest score in the request proposals. Commissioner mentioned that it's quite a bit more expensive. What about this proposal scored high? Why was this the winner?
And so a lot of what we're looking again is that mention of that process for the, the chain of custody and final disposal. So that's part of that is to make sure that we're dealing with a company that has a, a good solid track record in handling this kind of material, proper disposal methods and kind of all the credentials to go along with that. The other thing we really look at is the, the tenure of the staff that will actually be dealing with it at the, you know, either at the events or at our facility. When you're busy on a Saturday and you're seeing, you know, 100-plus customers come through, the, the ability of the tech to identify those materials that are appropriate and those that are still just good for disposal impacts our cost structure and, and we wanted to make sure that all those things were addressed. So it was, like I said, it was just nice to have three good proposals this time, so it, it wasn't just kind of a standard, you know, one and done in a sense. So it was nice to see that effort.
And then my final question is Stericycle, we talked about this earlier, had sort of a black eye a couple of years ago for disposing of aborted babies. And my understanding is they basically canceled a bunch of these contracts they had with abortion clinics around the country. I have no interest in contracting with a company that's in that business. From your perspective, they don't do that work anymore, is that?
No, so this company, no. I would say the, this is a separate entity in a sense that handles this material for us, but I can say with confidence that those materials that we do collect in our medical waste program at Cavanta go through a stringent process. One is just a signed contract that says that this material won't come to the facility. And again, a piece of paper doesn't set you really comfortable. What we're excited about with what Cavanta does is they go to the next level and they actually go out and do an audit to assure that, that again, the paper trail tracking and everything that shows that they are not disposing of those tissues in Cavanta in Marion County. And then there's even one additional step that I guess makes me feel more comfortable is the entity has to show records of disposal of that fetal tissue somewhere else. So it's taking that to that other proof that not only have you said you're not bringing it in, but it's going to go to a different facility.
Okay. Thank you.
You brought up a real painful time, but it isn't part of this conversation. Do you have time for just a quick story?
Sure.
I'll just tell you why I'm a little sensitive to this hazardous material and I've thought of it always. Early in my career, I was running garbage routes and kind of knew everybody and Farmer I know, he has a bunch of buckets out. And he said, you know, Charlie, I don't think we're supposed to take that. No, he says, Sam, DEQ says you're, these are all, they're all triple rinsed and this, this is the method we're supposed to use to get rid of it. So I said, okay, I'll check it out. So I, I threw them in the back and a Packer blade comes down, it's kind of a little poof of cloud. Didn't think too much of it. I drove literally a half mile more and started getting hot, rash. Yeah, I just got my attention now, but I was, it went away, but then the next week there was some more cans out. I said, I don't think so, Charlie. I'm done with your system. Anyway, if I have it, I will make a motion that we approve the contract for services with Stericycle Incorporated, the amount of $2,600,000 to operate the household hazardous waste facility.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, we have Commander Eric Ladd and our good lieutenant. Are you coming up or no?
I'm just waiting.
Oh, okay. Good morning, Commander.
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioners, good morning. For the record, my name is Eric Ladd. I'm the Operations Commander for Sheriff Casts in the Marion County Sheriff's Office. I'm here today to request approval of the contract for, for services with Greystone Tactical in the amount of $300,000 to provide uniforms and duty gear for the Marion County Sheriff's Office through December 31st, 2024. As a, as a background, in 2019, the Sheriff's Office conducted a multi-award request for proposal and were only able to award one contract for public safety personnel uniforms and duty gear. Due to the Sheriff's Office' need to fulfill the volume and frequency for purchases of uniforms and duty gear for staff, an additional contract award is needed. On January 15th of 2020, the Sheriff's Office came before the board to request an exemption allowing the use of special procurement to contract with Greystone Tactical to provide uniforms and duty gear for uniformed public safety personnel employed by the Sheriff's Office. Additionally, as you very well may know, the Sheriff's Office employs 356 staff members across four divisions, the jail, operations, enforcement division and community corrections. Within those divisions, we have specialty assignments, marine patrol and detectives, our folks that work transports and intake at the jail, code enforcement, our record staff, evidence folks, all require uniform gear to perform their duties. Since January 1st of 2019, the Sheriff's Office has purchased uniforms and duty gear for 36 new hires and we've had approximately 25 promotions to replace or to add standard, or I'm sorry, promotions. This is in addition to standard uniform replacement for wear and tear. Due to the volume and frequency by which the Sheriff's Office orders uniforms and duty gear, it is necessary to have more than one vendor that supplies these goods. Greystone Tactical is a local Salem business that supplies uniforms and duty gear that are better than or equal to items required by the Sheriff's Office policy. Purchasing these items from Greystone on a supplemental basis will allow the Sheriff's Office to outfit uniformed public safety employees with necessary duty gear and uniforms required to complete their jobs. This would allow the Sheriff's Office to have two contracting options for purchases of uniforms and duty gear. Lastly, Greystone will be able to provide jackets, pants, polos and duty gear to supplement purchases from the current contracted vendor and the Sheriff's Office will purchase supplemental items at the discretion based on need and volume. Thank you for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Commander?
I don't have any questions. Didn't you want a sheriff's hat? Weren't you the one?
I did want a sheriff's hat and the sheriff told me I had to go to training.
Well, I thought maybe they could order like unofficial or wannabe.
Oh, that's good. Yeah. Could you ask the sheriff if he'll get me a wannabe sheriff's hat?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
I can get you a hat in Public Works, by the way, if you get desperate.
No, I know the, the other departments, they're willing to give me a hat, but not the sheriff's.
I don't know what it says. So I would.
They have standards over there, you know?
Commissioner, I'm sure that we can. I'm sure the lieutenant can get a hold of the hat, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract for services with Greystone Tactical in the amount of $300,000 to provide uniforms and duty gear for the Marion County Sheriff's Office through December 31st, 2024.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion about sheriff's hats? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Commander.
Thank you very much.
Okay. It's my turn to read the calendar. Man, you got off lucky.
This is a long one.
Yeah, you only had like four last time. Okay, today is Wednesday, March 4th. We're in board session here in the center hearing room. This afternoon at noon, we have our Woodburn Marion County Meeting located at Casa Marquez at 555 North Front Street in Woodburn. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 5th, at 9:30 in the morning, we have a department head and elected officials meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Thursday is tomorrow, March 5th, at 11:45, we have an Earthwise Awards Networking and Luncheon located in the Spinning Room of the Willamette Heritage Center. That's 1313 Mill Street, Southeast in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 5th, at 1:30 in the afternoon, we have a work session on community development block grants located in the Silverdine Conference Room, the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. On Monday, March 9th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have an Association of Oregon County Steering Legislative Committee and Board Meeting located at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. On Monday, March 9th, at 11:30 in the morning, we have a Salem Chamber Forum Speaker Series located at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. On Monday, March 9th, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Sheriff's Office Awards and Swearing and Ceremony located at the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training Hall of Heroes, 4190 Omsville Highway, Southeast in Salem. On Tuesday, March 10th, at 7:30 in the morning, we have a Staton Marion County Meeting located at the Covered Bridge Cafe. That's 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. On Tuesday, March 10th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have an OSU Extension Food Innovation Center Tour located at 1207 Northwest Nato Parkway, number 154 in Portland. On Wednesday, March 11th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have a board session right here located in the center hearing room. This is the first floor of 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. On Wednesday, March 11th, at noon, we have a SED Core Monthly Business Lunch located in Broadway Commons at 1300 Broadway Street, Northeast in Salem. And on Wednesday, March 11th, at 6:30 in the evening, we have our North Fork Community Meeting located at Camp Cascade, 33806 North Fork Road in Lyons. There you go. Commissioner? How was the week?
Just to be serious for a minute, you know, I've always worried about bird flu now this coronavirus and just for the public's sake, we're watching, no, no issues in Marion County. We had the opportunity to go look at the, what would you call it, Center, I guess, of the Health Department, the gearing up to answer questions and deal with whatever happens. And tomorrow, the department head meeting will make sure all of our departments are aware, thinking, ready, hopeful that nothing happens, so.
Yeah, it was good to see our public health folks at work and kind of hear about, about their work. That's something that I didn't really understand until I came to work here, how when, if there's a, a case of coronavirus that's confirmed in Marion County, they immediately identify all the locations where that person has been, possible places of exposure. They reach out to those people to make sure that they're containing the spread of the virus. I thought that was really interesting and it's nice to have a group of dedicated people that, that are, are ready to sort of jump on that to make sure that they contain the spread of a virus.
Yeah, I thought it was reassuring, no kidding.
Yeah.
I do note, someone put a bottle of Purell on my desk. I don't know if that was specific to me or something.
No, I got one too.
Oh, did you? Oh, that does help.
Yeah, I think they're worried about us Commissioners.
Glad, glad-handers. Oh, yeah, I'm not shaking hands.
I think that's right, yeah. It's, it's a rough deal not being able to shake hands in our, our line of business. It's sort of expected, you know?
With a smile. All right. I'm pretty happy.
All right. We're adjourned.[1736.97]